Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, no. Any abstentions? The board will now enter into closed session.
When we go back in the open session.
Which is this one?
Yeah.
Roll.
Called a wooden roll call.
Okay, okay.
She's gonna do the roll call.
Awesome.
First thing.
So, Bob. I'm gonna... The closed session has concluded. We are now returning to open session. I would like to entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
I move that the school board having been in closed session pursuant, a proper motion come out of the closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No? Any abstentions? Ms. B. Roll call?
Good evening, everybody. Ms. Boone?
Here.
Ms. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Halt?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Grant? Dr. Harrison?
Here.
And Dr. Carter?
Here.
Certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where Section 2.2-3712. Delta of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law and now therefore be a result that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meetings to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Any abstentions? Do we have a motion to approve the personal agenda removing number two?
Two.
Removing number two?
I'll sort of move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And a second? Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the work session minutes for October 2nd, 2025.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the work session minutes for October 2nd, 2025.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the work session minutes for October 2nd, 2025.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Any abstentions? The 2.4 reading minutes for October 16th, it is the first read, so we'll have the second read on our next meeting. And then the 4.3.
That one is already approved on the personnel agenda.
Dr. Carter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Financial report.
Ms. Boone, school board, and those assembled, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Morrison.
I will be presenting the October 31st financial report, and as of October 31st, 33% of the month in the year have gone by, and we have collected 31% of our revenues and expended 34% of our expenditures. And as we've talked about, there are significant upfront expenditures that have to be expended to start the school year prior to those funds coming in. So this is how our general fund came out. Next slide. Textbook fund, we've spent $11,000 so far this year on textbooks, and for nutrition, we look good. We've collected 25% of our revenue and expended 21% of our budgeted expenditures. For federal grants, the 1.3 million budget only represents the new grants for fiscal year '25-'26. Once we get to that point with fiscal year '25, when we get city council to approve to carry forward the balances from last year of our existing grants, then we will have a much larger budget after that. Okay, last slide, overall total.
Before we move on, do you have any specifics of that, of what their, I mean, what our numbers are gonna be when that is approved? I mean, right now, we're 397,000 deficit, so what's the pending amount that we're expecting from them?
Well, the deficit, it's gonna be about 5 million, but the deficit is just revenues less expenditures. The budget will be approximately 5 million against the 982 of actual expenditures.
And that comes when? Is it gonna be in June of '26, or...?
According, I was, I've been in contact with the city regarding that, and the latest update is that they are almost finished with fiscal year '25 and almost have it ready for an audit, and once they, they're expecting to do that in December, so our auditors will be coming in January. The first thing that they request is the city's financials. So, once those city financials are made available, we can begin our audit, and then at the conclusion of our audit, then and only then will we know what the outcome for cash position was for fiscal year '25.
So, knowing past behaviors helps us predict the future. Are we going to get what we're expected if that all goes through? If the audit says that we're due, again, it looks like 3.7 more million, was that done last year? Did we get what we were expecting last year from that situation?
Yes, because I prepared a budget amendment, presented it to the school board, then it went to city council for a vote and approval, and then both the city and the schools updated their books accordingly.
Okay, so that came through, it got it funded, we were good?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the grants cross years, meaning most of the grant years are October through September, and they're usually for more than a year at a time, so we still have the '24-'25 grants and the '25-'26 grants that we're working out of both of those. The 1.3 million is the fiscal year '25-'26, and the money that's coming in the budget is going to be for the existing grants, and we know exactly how much that is.
Thank you.
Questions on the financials?
Are you and the acting city manager still working hand in hand, or...?
Absolutely.
And based off of the numbers you just presented us, he's in, he's in the loop with where they're at as well?
Yes, and the city, new city finance director, I'm very encouraged by my interactions with him as well, so I think that them, all three of us working together will have this done by December.
Do you just anticipate any hiccups or any type of roadblocks that would prevent the members from being what we need them to be?
No, sir. Okay, next slide, please. Looking at the cash position, I will take this opportunity to reiterate that, as you know, we have, a portion of our funding derived from lottery proceeds does not start coming in until January. In order to open the school year, we have to incur expenses for salaries for teachers, instructional materials, supplies, purchase services, and operations. So, there's a mismatch of timing in between when the funds come in and when we have to expend them. Typically, the city has been, since we have combined bank accounts, they have been technically covering those costs, but it happens every year, and it happens to every school district. So, when you look at the month of October, we expended 97,000 more than we brought in, and the first three months of the year were 709,000 more than we brought in, so currently, the cumulative deficit's gonna be 807,000. Once again, that does not include our beginning cash reserves, and that doesn't include unreimbursed roof expenditures from fiscal year '25.
So, this is hard for me, because the unapproved roof expenditures is...
Certification.
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3712. Delta of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, and now therefore be a result that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meetings to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Any abstentions? Do we have a motion to approve the personal agenda, removing number two?
Two.
Removing number two?
I'll so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I've moved that we approve the agenda as presented.
And a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I've moved that we approve the work session minutes for October 2nd, 2025.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no? Any abstentions? The 2.4 reading minutes for October 16th, it is the first read, so we'll have the second read on our next meeting. And then the 4.3.
That one is already approved on the personnel agenda.
Okay. Dr. Carter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, financial report.
Ms. Boone, School Board, and those assembled, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Morrison.
I will be presenting the October 31st financial report, and as of October 31st, 33% of the months in the year have gone by, and we have collected 31% of our revenues and expended 34% of our expenditures. And as we've talked about, there are significant upfront expenditures that have to be expended to start the school year prior to those funds coming in. So this is how our general fund came out. Next slide. Textbook fund, we've spent $11,000 so far this year on textbooks, and for nutrition, we look good, we've collected 25% of our revenue and expended 21% of our budgeted expenditures. For federal grants, the 1.3 million budget only represents the new grants for fiscal year 25, 26. Once we get to that point with fiscal year 25, when we get city council to approve to carry forward the balances from last year of our existing grants, then we will have a much larger budget after that. Okay, last slide, overall total.
Before we move on, do you have any specifics of that, of what their, I mean, what our numbers are going to be when that is approved? I mean, right now, we're 397,000 deficit, so what's the pending amount that we're expecting from them?
Well, the deficit, it's going to be about 5 million, but the deficit is just revenues less expenditures. The budget will be approximately 5 million against the 982 of actual expenditures.
And that comes when? Is it going to be in June of '26, or?
According, I was, I've been in contact with the city regarding that, and the latest update is that they are almost finished with fiscal year 2025 and almost have it ready for an audit. And once they, they're expecting to do that in December, so our auditors will be coming in January. The first thing that they request is the city's financials. So, once those city financials are made available, we can begin our audit, and then at the conclusion of our audit, then and only then will we know what the outcome for cash position was for fiscal year 25.
So, knowing past behaviors helps us predict the future. Are we going to get what we're expected if that all goes through? If the audit says that we're due, again, it looks like 3.7 more million, was that done last year? Did we get what we were expecting last year from that situation?
Yes. Because I prepared a budget amendment, presented it to the school board, then it went to city council for a vote and approval, and then both the city and the schools updated their books accordingly.
Okay, so that came through, it got it funded, we were good?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the grants cross years, meaning most of the grant years are October through September, and they're usually for more than a year at a time, so we still have the 24, 25 grants and the 25, 26 grants that we're working out of both of those. The 1.3 million is the fiscal year 25, 26, and the money that's coming in the budget is going to be for the existing grants, and we know exactly how much that is.
Thank you.
Questions on the financials?
Are you and the acting city manager still working hand in hand, or?
Absolutely.
And based off of the numbers you just presented us, he's in, he's in the loop with where they're at as well?
Yes, and the city, new city finance director, I'm very encouraged by my interactions with him as well, so I think that them, all three of us working together will have this done by December.
Do you just anticipate any hiccups or any type of roadblocks that would prevent the members from being what we need them to be?
No, sir. Okay, next slide, please. Looking at the cash position, I will take this opportunity to reiterate that, as you know, we had, a portion of our funding derived from lottery proceeds does not start coming in until January. In order to open the school year, we have to incur expenses for salaries for teachers, instructional materials, supplies, purchase services, and operations. So, there's a mismatch of timing in between when the funds come in and when we have to expend them. Typically, the city has been, since we have combined bank accounts, they have been technically covering those costs, but it happens every year and it happens to every school district. So, when you look at the month of October, we expended 97,000 more than we brought in, and the first three months of the year were 709,000 more than we brought in. So currently, the cumulative deficit is going to be 807,000. Once again, that does not include our beginning cash reserves, and that doesn't include unreimbursed roof expenditures from fiscal year 25.
So, this is hard for me, because the unapproved roof expenditures has been an issue now since I've been on the board. Are we going to get that? I mean, because if we're using that as part of our budget, but that's not a chance to get it, why do we keep including that as a possibility when it's not going to happen? I mean, is it going to happen? I mean, is that going to come after the audit and say, well, this is, was approved from before, and now that's going to come? I guess, again, I'm just concerned that we're using numbers of possibilities, but not the reality of what's going to happen. I mean, we've, we've been waiting now two years to get that money. Is it going to happen?
Was that the roof money that we didn't request back in time? Because I know they said it was a timeline. If you did not make the request at a certain time, you lost it. So, are we talking about money that's already been lost?
No, ma'am. What we're talking about is, if you look at the city council minutes for August of 2023, the minutes indicate that the 1,001 million and $50,000 that the school system paid to the city was to be earmarked to reimburse roof expenditures over and above the literary loan. Then, and I was told, and then in fiscal '24 and '25, those amounts were not carried over, meaning there wasn't an accounting entry made to make that available on the books in the following year.
I think that's the same money. I know you said earmarked, but by city, what the city explained was, it had to be requested formally by a certain date to get it back. I think that money is lost because we didn't formally, and I was not on the board then, we didn't formally write a request from it, for it, and it is gone, from what I understood. So, I don't know if we still should be counting it. We might want to get clarification with the city one, one last time, because we had that discussion during the joint meeting, and they explained that that money was there. Earmark wasn't good enough, it was supposed to be requested back by a certain date, and I asked the question then, did we request it back? They said no, so if you don't request it back by a certain date, I do believe they stated it is gone. So, we, like Dr. Reed said, we, we just need to find out if it's there or not, and stop bringing it back up if it's no longer ours. Is that what you're saying?
And then if it's not ours, we need to reset our budget. We need to relook at things and say, look, we're down.
It's not in the budget, this is, it's only a cash flow issue, it's not a budgetary issue.
Exactly, and I realize that's going to affect that bottom line in the end, correct?
The deficit, yes.
Exactly, so again, when we're looking at an 807,000 day deficit, yeah, we can say, well, we've still got that million in the back, hopefully we'll get that eventually. I'm just concerned we're, we're still hoping to find it, but again, all the indications are that the city's not going to give it to us.
Okay.
And so, if, if you know more, again, that's what I'm just wondering, now with the new city manager and city financial, maybe they'll.
I've made both of them aware of it, and they say they have it, they're aware of it, but they have so many issues to chase right now, that they will, they will look at that, and they, they realize it's, it's an issue. So, I will get confirmation from the city as to whether or not they intend to honor the commitment from those minutes, and if it's not possible, then the beginning from, from 2025, the beginning balance of 3.8 million would definitely be netted against that deficit. And once all the audit adjustments are made for 2025, then we'll get a clearer picture of was there a deficit or not.
So, the other thing I would love is, if we could compare year now to years in past, so we can kind of see what our trends are, it kind of gives us a good idea of what's happening. So, when I see 807,000, okay, that's accumulated, I'm fine.
The next slide, please.
Okay, good, so was that a preparation for you? Okay, good.
Thank you. So, we were 807,000 as of, as of year to date, October, but as you can see, in previous years, we've also had, been in deficits at this time of the year, again, due to the timing of the funding, and 2022 and 2020, we were in a very small surplus. But again, we're talking a $25 million budget versus 1 million, 4 million, 800,000. So, we are doing better this year than we have in years past. We have been monitoring the expenditures closely, we have been holding back on our cash management and holding which bills we pay when, and so I believe we're in a better spot than we were in years past.
And I may have asked this question before, but what, why does 2024 stand out?
Because we had, first of all, we had a $1 million clean school bus grant, we received the money in '24, but we paid the actual expenses in year '25, that was a million dollars. Then we had $4 million we paid for the roof, only a portion of which was reimbursed by the literary loan. The rest of it is this 712,000 I speak of, that I was always under the impression that the city would cover. And we, we had capital expenditures that we hadn't planned on, so there's a, a number of things that go into that that are not recurring.
So, when does the city approve their budget? When is that approved?
Generally, the school board will present their budget in January, it'll have a public hearing on the budget in February, and then in March, it's due to the city manager, they then work on the total city budget, and then, once city council approves the city budget, we adopt the school budget. That normally happens in May or June. Could we start with a calendar now? That's a good segue into my calendar. This is the proposed budget calendar for year 2027. This is a first read, and any feedback is welcomed, and I have sent this over to the city for their consideration, review, and feedback, and asked them whether they wanted to put any joint meetings in there or change any of these deadlines. So, we'll revisit that next meeting. So, as you can see, in May and June, I have the city adopting the city's budget, and the school board adopting the school board's budget. And this calendar has been similar to years past. Okay, back to the vouchers.
Before we get off of that slide, Tracy, I think the large numbers in 2021, '23, and '24, most of that are COVID funds, aren't they, that had not been reimbursed?
Yes. There was that as well. So, as we do every month, we're going to list every expenditure we've made this year. Next slide, please. Okay, these are the textbook and cafeteria funds, they are self-supporting, so we do get revenue to cover these.
Was there a reason why we're negative? I mean, we've always been positive with our textbook fund, was there just a bigger draw at this point because of the beginning of the year?
No, the, the revenue comes into our general fund, and we move it once a year to the textbook fund.
Okay.
So, we haven't seen the revenue on the books yet.
Okay, okay, that's what I was wondering.
But we know it's there, so we've spent 11,000 of that. These are in the general fund. This is all of our credit card expenditures. Yes, ma'am. It's usually at the end of my report, so we'll make sure it's there.
And we're getting board docs on Monday, is that correct? Or when are they posted? Do we know?
Either Monday or Tuesday, generally.
I know that should be, so, it should be by Monday, right? The board docs are all there by Monday, not Thursday at 3 o'clock? Okay.
Yes, some of the superintendent's presentation sometimes is a little slower, but the rest of it can be, can be uploaded.
Interesting, expect $14,000 for. Paying for a foot?
The.
I'm just saying.
The gym uniforms are in here, I mean, the football uniforms are in here.
Is that 13,000 for the cheerleading uniforms, the normal expenditure?
No, I would assume you only replace uniforms periodically on a cyclical basis year to year.
Go, go ahead, Dr. Ricks.
What's for you? Okay, thank you.
So, how do we determine, and I'm just coming from the wrestling team, we provide funds for our own uniforms. When does it, when does it, the team itself provide funds versus the school provide funds? Do we have any policy on that, or how that works? Does it not come from their own fundraisers, or is it always the school that's going to be backing that up?
Say it again, Dr. Harris, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just wondering who ends up paying for uniforms? Is it always, I mean, we've got a booster club, we've got other forms of, like I said, the wrestling team, we, we are, my understanding, we're purchasing our own uniforms from our own fundraiser.
Yeah, we've had some issues with the budgeting in athletics, we're always been trending in the negative, and so we, that's why we went cashless and some tighter restrictions of money, because we would give the school a certain amount of money, and then, give you an example, last year, by January, February, we were already negative 12,000 overspent. And so, we, we're trying to put tighter controls of, of why is, why is it athletics is always being, is over, so overspending, spending, spending of what, what's been allotted?
And Dr. Ricks and I have been in conversations about establishing a more specific budget and getting a schedule for the uniforms, and specifically which year they're going to be purchased, so that we can better forecast as well. Okay, and the next slide starts the, the, oh, grant funds.
Back one. I'm sorry, I don't have my thing.
Okay, these, this starts the expenditures for grant funds. It's generally materials and supplies, purchase services, and these we get reimbursed for, but we have to expend them first. We set up a parent resource center, a sensory room, transition room, et cetera. Next slide. And then, this is our annual renewal of Power School.
And again, just to confirm, this has already been paid, we have to purchase it first, we get the grants, and the grants cover it. Do we see that accounting always come out correct?
Yes. We monitor every expenditure made in that grant and tie it to a reimbursement we've submitted.
That would be another thing I would love to see end of year, kind of a thing, or end of school year, whatever fiscal year that we do, that we can say, okay, here it is, these were our grants, this is what we expanded, zero balance at the end, so that we all can feel comfortable that what you're telling us is correct. I would appreciate that.
There's a lag at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year that we would factor in.
Sure, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, at a point where it's always going to be the same, right? If it be beginning, middle, whatever.
It absolutely should be. Because we wouldn't code an expense to a grant unless we are expecting reimbursement.
That's what we hope for.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
This one or one more?
This one. I know this is all grant, but I see a lot that says parent and family engagement materials. Do they give you a breakdown of what they use, let's say, the 19, about 1,904 to 380 something four plus, I saw it on the next page? Does those group give you a breakdown of what they use those grant, the money for? Even though it's grant funded, do they explain what they use it for?
Yes, and in fact, on our grant reimbursements, we have to be so detailed as to what was purchased, who, what, why, when, and where, that we attach the Amazon cart, because this whole page is Amazon expenditures. We attach the Amazon cart, and our grant reimbursement person has to enter every single item in order to be reimbursed. So, I will put the financial report in, in any format that the board desires, I will add references to previous years, and will confirm with the city whether or not the 712,000 is available.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Carter. I'm excited to share with you two updates that we've got happening with operations. The first is, we are revitalizing the FHS greenhouse through a partnership with Virginia State University, and this project was originally listed on our capital improvement plan and estimated to cost approximately $40,000. So, with this partnership with Virginia State, what they're doing, they have taken the cover off, they're going to replace that cover, and they're going to prepare this for use of our students. And it really opens so many different instructional opportunities, really K-12 with this. So, in elementary grades, students would be able to see plant life cycles as they get older, it, it'll give our students in CTE programming the opportunity to grow plants that can be utilized as, with culinary arts program or through our school cafeteria. So, we're really excited about this, this opportunity, and look forward to inviting you to the ribbon cutting when, when the work is complete. Also, again, like to throw a shout out to my maintenance team for taking care of clearing that, there, there was a lot of work that needed to be done both inside and out, so that the contractors could get to the greenhouse itself. So, really excited and, and very appreciative of Virginia State University and, and their willingness to partner with us on this project. And also, in terms of the SP Morton Mod C awning, we have entered into a contract to have that work completed, the total with two additional, two of the add-ons, it's going to total $25,900, and that project is being funded through a capital request with CSEP. So, for both of these projects, there is not an impact on our operating budget, so we continue to look for ways to fund major capital projects. So, we continue to look for ways to fund major capital projects. So, very, very excited for this, this to be happening. We are working with the contractor to make sure that the drawings are certified through an engineer and then those, those drawings are going to be taken to the city to secure the permit, to make sure that everything is, is appropriate. But again, very excited to be moving forward on this project as well. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, good evening. All right, so I'm going to be going over some attendance updates and also some other interventions that we have in place for attendance. First, I will be going over a review for, of our FCPS average daily attendance, daily membership. And as you can see, this is a three, three-year trend. In the fall, you can see on two thousand twenty-three, we had a total of nine hundred and fifty students. September thirty of twenty, two thousand twenty-four, we had one thousand and sixty-five. And now, we reported September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, we currently have one thousand and one students enrolled. In the fall, I mean, in the spring. In the spring, March the thirtieth is the next time that we do a major report. And as you can see, two thousand twenty-three, we had a total of nine hundred and sixty-six students K through twelve, twenty-four, nine hundred and sixty-three. And then, by March thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, we had a total of one thousand and fifty-eight students K through twelve. And as you can see, our pre-K population kind of stayed consistent. We have a pre-K population of sixty students. Seven students are funded with special education and fifty-three students are Virginia Preschool Initiative, which is VPI funding.
On that, why we dropped from last year?
Well, we have...
You know why we... With the surrounding situation? Is it because of our graduation rates and lower populations? Did we see numbers decrease from outside or inside Franklin?
Well, we have seen an increase of students enrolling in private, like homes, programs from home and homeschooling, which we'll be able to get into some more interventions in the presentation of how we are working strategically to offer that, offer a cyber, a cyber virtual academy to kind of gather some of those students back. So, we have, those numbers have increased. Matter of fact, if we look at the population of homeschool now and we look at, and the few students that signed up for like a private school online, we're looking at about sixty students in that category. So, that takes that number right out there. All right, so, in, in, in terms of accountability and attendance, that would be presented at a later date when our chief academic officer presents all the data, once the state released that. But until then, I did want to give an update on how we addressing truancy and chronic absenteeism overall. And as you can see here, this is a snapshot of our truancy process and how it starts. When a student began to, begin to miss the day, they automatically get an automatic notification through our parent square. Then we go into, you can see the timeline where we go into. If it's a second time, how the teacher reaches out as an intervention and logs that information. Then we have letter, three-day letters that go home. And then, we have the five-day letter. So, once we get to five days, that's when we are meet, having those schedules. Department of Social Service may be involved initially. We have those attendance meetings and we also begin to address how students can come back to school, after school programs to be able to make up time. So, we address that early in those five days. Then we go into the sixth day, where we may add some more interventions if it becomes a sixth day. And as you can see, the pattern continue, the flow chart continues to flow. And we may have those seven days where we have those multidisciplinary meetings. We bring in social service, other supports in place to kind of help with the family. Also, that's when we go into the next stage of it, where we may have more support from the community. And we take all these steps. There's a lot of steps before we actually present, you know, file the court petition. So, I wanted to just kind of share a snap, a snapshot of all the interventions and supports and things that we have in place before these cases become court cases.
I'm just going to ask something simply because I had this happen to me. So, is that all AI-generated when they're generating, okay, your child missed school, we get phone calls, we get emails? Is there any individual that, I mean, how does that all get part of that registry and how does that work? Is it just computer-generated that, okay, your child missed school, it's an automatic phone call that comes from the school, correct?
Yes.
After three things, is that an automatic email that comes through? No one, no physical person is doing that? That's all through a computer program?
That's all in the first, yeah, in the first one to three days, that's, that's most likely generated through Power, Power Square. And then, our truancy officers are reaching out, or our registers are reaching out with phone calls. Once you get past that one to three days, then we scheduling home visits. We putting in our truancy officers and our family engagement team are beginning to move, move forward with home visits. So, yes. Well, if you note at the bottom as well, where it says, it's a special note there, because that's kind of ongoing, where you see truancy lists compiled on the first working day of each month and shared with Dr. Elliott and also Ms. Murphy, who determined, share those, that information with agencies. And then, a lot of that process, that's ongoing where they are doing the home visits. So, it's an ongoing intervention. It can, it can start at day three, it can start, it can pick up at day five. It can continue even throughout the court process. Those home visits are ongoing throughout this process. All right, so our next slide, just kind of deals with, again, some of the strategies and things that we currently have in place. We have our attendance incentive program. We also have, really began to incorporate a more strategic approach with our family involvement and just parental involvement. We have included the superintendent's parent advisory, which are, which is helping and giving us input on how do we address tardies and, you know, students leaving early. So, they have strategies and supports that they are supporting us with and, and also reaching out to the community with that as well. And to include having those sessions in our family and resource rooms for parents. And we also working on currently, which is a turkey drive, at which we are holding parents accountable, joining the PTA, being a part of attendance. Having those important enough, getting the students to school to, you know, go past those five days. We consistently working with the court system, social service, Western Tidewater. Again, I talked about the flexible instruction, giving students those times to, you know, to make up those days, but they have to be with outside of instructional hours. The state has allowed students to make up at least fifteen days. So, we are continuing to push that out as well. We currently still have two full-time truancy officers. One is grant-funded, so we're able to fund that through a grant. We have bi-weekly meetings at each school and we're consistently, each month, the students have their little competitions in the classroom, encouraging their classmates to come. So, we are still consistently working on that. All right, so a recruitment effort for the homeschool students. JR OTC has been offered to students in grades eight through twelve who are currently at home. So, we are promoting a flyer and I'll share that flyer after this presentation. FCPS is now working on a strategic plan to roll out an FCPS Virtual Academy as a pilot program for the second semester. Now, we, we're noticing that a lot of our parents, some of our parents are moving to the virtual component and they want to do that at home. So, we have, we have partnered with the, with the cyber, Virginia Cyber Security, which is a cyber academy, which is approved by the Virginia Department of Education, where live teachers will be able to provide instruction and we will be able to be, get support for those students that are participating. So, once we begin to really roll that out, we're going to advertise that in the fall and then we plan to roll it out the second semester. And there are a host of core subjects that the students can sign up for and we will provide remediation and support. And there are also a host of electives from all types of world languages, poetry. Just, it's a host of electives that, that will be offered to the homeschool students. So, in the hopes that we can have them come back full-time through our academy or they will have an opportunity to come back part-time through our academy and we will receive funding for those students. No, we will not be paying another teacher to do it. This program already have licensed teachers built into the program. So, if those students come back and we receive the four, just putting a number out there. Say we receive fourteen thousand for a student from the state. So, if that student comes back in our Virtual Academy full-time, then we will receive that funding and about nineteen hundred of that funding will go to this virtual program. So, we're not losing, we actually will be gaining and with the strategy of how we can get our homes, our homeschool or our private students back into our program. We would just have someone that's already on our team, some people that's already on our team, just facilitated and making sure they're working with the Virtual Academy to monitor students. But they have all of that already set up through the virtual, and they have licensed teachers. Yes, yes, ma'am.
What, what's the stipulation on sports with us and students that are homeschooled?
There are some, going to be some guidelines with sports, that's a good question, especially with guidelines with the VHSL. So, these students will not necessarily be able to play football. However, we can look at a strategic approach of how they can possibly be in JR OTC or how they can be in the marching band, other things that's not necessarily following the VHSL guidelines. They will have an opportunity with those.
So, is that the, the standard? I mean, VHSL says if you're not a full-time enrolled student, you cannot participate in VHSL activities.
They will not be able to participate in VHSL.
And that's a full-time, it's not three-quarters time, there's no other way around that, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
And again, this is the whole team that worked tremendously to make all this work happen. So, thankful for the team. And if you can share, share the flyer. Just the team. So, our dean of students is Dr. Scott and also Mr. Hayes. Just, yeah. Yes, we have two. Ms. 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 Howard is a school counselor for three through six and Ms. Pike, Pickett, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Pike, Pickett. Ms. Pickett is the counselor for pre-K through two. And this is the current flyer that we have available for our homeschool edition, that we have sent this flyer to all of our homeschool families. We also have shared it in, in Parent Square and, and also at our Parent Advisory Committee, so that we can, so that we can get the word out that we are offering JR OTC. So, those are just some basic requirements. Again, levels one through four are available and the students must attend class from one-twenty PM to three-fifteen PM. And again, this will be another strategy to enhance our ADM.
I mean, again, I don't, I don't see why we're not doing like the band and some of those other things you just pointed out. I mean, we've got instruments, I mean, gosh, if I was homeschool and wanted to have my kid get into band, and that's a possibility that they, I mean, I wouldn't just do JR OTC. It sounds like if we've got other options for us, why don't we expand to those if that increases that ADM?
Right, and that's what we're going to do. When we roll out the Virtual Academy, now that we know that, we'll be able to add what we can offer far as extracurricular or clubs and organizations. We'll be able to offer those that, that, that's outside of VHSL guidelines.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
I would just say, for everybody who is able, if you have kids or loved ones or whatever, do a big push to join the local PTAs at the high school and it, and come out for the touch base and the family reading nights and things that they have available at the school. And I encourage everyone, talk to your children's teachers or whatnot, even if you don't get them on Parent Square, be as involved and active as you possibly, possibly can, because there's a lot of good things that are going on around. But if you don't have access to Parent Square for whatever reason or you don't know, you know what I mean, you see someone bring them with you, because sometimes people just don't have information. But I will do a really, really big push, especially for the parent engagement nights and the PCHs.
So, I attended the Adult Education Committee. This was two weeks ago and I really was excited about a, a software that we purchased called Zello, X-E-L-O-W. Amazing, and it helps these kids understand where they want to go and how to get there. Ms. Massenberg is the one teaching it. But as any parents want to know, if their kids have not talked, if they're in sixth and seventh grade particularly and have not heard about that, they need to. I know we have funded it. Do you know how long, Dr. Carter, we have funded it for? How long we purchased it for? Zello, yeah. Okay, because I mean, it, it is really a powerful tool to help these kids say, what do you want to do and how are you going to get there? And it was just a, yeah, and it's, it's made for that, but I know we're only teaching it in sixth and seventh? So, are we going to provide actual to each, each grade? Okay, okay, thank you.
Persons in our community and especially in my ward have contacted me about addressing the scores and Franklin's performance with the state and how low we are. Those things are still being looked at, it is not being forgotten about, because I have had questions, is it going to be addressed, is it going to be discussed? Yes, I don't want people to think it is being ignored because you specifically reached out and asked and had concerns. Also, I want to take this time again to apologize to Dr. Minor again for a statement I made in August. Regina Hill did not state that Dr. Minor made certain statements. It was not Dr. Minor, which I said, so I do want to apologize to her once again.
I wanted to see her in her fur stand up there, that's what I was hoping for.
I'm going to adjourn.
I'll second that.